Commissioners, it's after four o'clock.
Ah, yes. I'm missing, let's see, we're missing. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, it's, uh, four minutes past four, so we're running a little bit late. Could I have roll call, please?
Mayor Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
He's here. Here right now. Okay, we, uh, can we have a, uh, pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, awards and proclamations? Item 3.1, the week of July 18th through the 22nd, 2016, is Crisis Intervention Team Week in the city of Salina. Carol Vier with the Talk Salina will read the proclamation.
Thank you. Carol Vier, 5132 Shannon Street, Salina. Thank you for letting me come. Proclamation. Whereas police officers of the Salina Police Department stand watch over our citizens, selflessly risking their lives to protect individuals, families, neighborhoods, and property against crime, and whereas it is important that all citizens recognize the duties, responsibilities, hazards, sacrifices, and training of local law enforcement agencies, and whereas it is acknowledged that overt use of force is not the best intervention for every situation that calls for police action, and whereas the week of July 18 through 22, 2016, has been set aside as a week of crisis intervention train, team training for Salina police officers, now therefore, I, KJ Crawford, Mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, do hereby declare July 18 through 22, 2016, as Crisis Intervention Team Week in the City of Salina, Kansas, and hereby publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community in their effort to incorporate multiple systems of care in crisis situations. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my signature and the seal of the City of Salina this 18th day of July, 2016.
Okay. Thank you, Carol, and are there any activities?
There are.
Tell us about that.
First of all, I'd like to recognize Austin Harden, one of our Salina police officers. He has already attended the Crisis Intervention Team Training. Thank you. Did you want to say something?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We're glad you're there.
We're glad you're here, thank you very much. This week is the training. It's a forty-hour training. It's put on by the Police Department, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and the Central Kansas Foundation, and, um, on Friday afternoon, there will be a graduation ceremony at four o'clock, to which the public is invited and encouraged to attend. Is that everything? Okay. Oh, there's another officer. You're our officer. Oh, and I don't know her name. 3:30? I'm sorry, the graduation's at 3:30.
3:30, okay.
Did you want to say something? Okay, so we're represented by two police officers.
Very good. Well, we're very glad they're both here. How's that?
Thank you. Carol.
As most of you know, I just recently lost my husband, and because of that, my, my thought process is not where it should be to conduct this meeting. I'm gonna ask Vice Mayor Ryan to finish up the meeting for me. Okay.
Well, Mayor, you weren't here last week, so you don't know what you're gonna get. But we'll continue on. I believe the next item's the Citizens' Form, so if there's anybody that would like to address the Commission with some concerns or ideas, we'd hear from you now. And of course, name and, and address for the clerk, please.
Karen Shade, 111, Wisconsin. Last week, some things were said during the County Commissioner debates about the Expo Center that I found disturbing, and before I start writing letters to the editor about my concerns, I thought I'd start doing some fact-checking here. It's my understanding that the city owns the property that the Expo Center is on, and that the county owns the buildings, and that a ten-year lease that enables the county to use the city's property is set to expire in early 2019, and it's been a question how much the lease is for, for involved in this.
Well, real quick, to clarify the term, it's, it does expire 2019, however, the county has unilateral ability to have, I think, is it four one-year extensions?
I had not heard that.
So in essence, they, at their own choosing, they could take that lease out to, through 2023.
That's extremely helpful to know, thank you. And is it accurate that the city informed the county that the city would take up the issues to extend the lease in 2018? That you didn't, do you didn't plan to, to start discussions on this this year?
No, we haven't had, the only communication between the city and county on the lease is that the county had asked whether we would take that lease up, and this is some time ago, and the City Commission had asked the county to put together sort of a, a plan, a vision, a concept, a combination of those things, really with what, what do they want to see the future use of that with the properties that they currently lease, so that the governing body could get an idea of the community impact that would have.
Great, that's helpful. In some ways, it makes sense that the ca, the city might want to wait to discuss some of these issues until 2018 or later, as you'll know where your downtown revitalization projects are gonna be, and you're also, just as this is an issue for the County Commission races, it might be an issue in the 2017 City Commissioner races. Besides being suited to house the Expo Center as it is, I've also heard that the property might be suited for projects assorted, associated with restoring the river to its original channel, possibly other downtown revitalization projects, and I guess my, the point I want to make sure I'm clear on is that the city has potential other uses for this property, potentially.
Yeah, the, for some time, that the governing bodies said, let's have some form of a master plan of that, and there's been different attempts in the past. I think, to my knowledge, the only thing sort of locked in right now is if you look at our strategic plan, it, it calls for a hotel to be connected to or very adjacent to the bicentennial center. Now, depending on what happens in the downtown and the fulfillment of, of that project, that plan will be reviewed, that, that item may or may not remain after that, but until, until the downtown gets further, we don't know. Other than that, I'm, I have to look at the governing body to see if I'm not, you know, if I'm not recalling an item, but I think that's really the most specific item, other than simply kind of looking at a broader base master plan to determine what's the best use of the property for the long-term benefit, which could very well include city uses and county uses.
Okay. The reason I bring all of this up is at the County Commission debates, I heard some of the candidates, when asked questions about the Expo Center, they, they responded by saying the city should renew the lease. And first, it's a decision that I recognize that the City Commissioners should make, and not the county, and second, for the voters who see the need to strengthen city and county relationships, some of those candidates who boldly said that, were, who boldly said what the city should do, have been the ones who've complained the most bitterly about what the city told the county to do in dealing with the Health Department with a cracked roof. So I'm reminded of the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. It's been most concerning to me that when asked to identify what the county might do if the city didn't renew the lease, that few candidates had meaningful responses. Back in August 24th of last year, Wes Jackson with the Land Institute appeared before this Commission, saying that they had some interest in the property. That is, that the county owns south on East Waterwell Road, sometimes that's been erroneously referred to as a future expo site. I've also heard that people in North Salina have expressed an interest if, if, if the property was to move. It has been frustrating to me that while the county has set aside $25,000 a year to do capital improvements on the property, it's been, they're in about the seventh year of the lease, and that means that about $175,000 might have been accumulated toward capital improvements, and right now, $160,000 sits in a fund, and the county, to my understanding, has not acted to repair some air conditioning units and some fans that might be needed when the lead sled folks have a garage sale for a couple of days in two of the buildings, and it might become problematic during the county fair. I can understand why the county might want to wait to invest in things like, they've proposed a warm-up barn for some of the horse shows and some of that, to make sure that they would get a return on investment, but I'm, I'm deeply concerned that the county isn't also investing as it should in, they're collecting the money to make improvements, and they haven't always carried through in making them. So, I, I, to me, it seems like, in the words of Dr. Phil, what might be called for here is there's a need for a hero, someone who can set aside past hurts and wrongs and begin a dialogue. Hopefully, the new Commissioners will, will come to you, and I hope that, you know, they're gonna need some time to figure out if, if they're not going to remain at the Expo Center to figure out where they might locate, and then to budget for and plan for buildings and creating a site. And so, I do apologize for what I think is an error by the County Commission candidates for advising you all what you should do. I don't see it as their role, but I would ask that, for, for the betterment of the community and for the citizens, I see this as an issue that needs to be resolved sooner as opposed to later. I really do appreciate, because I have not heard that there was a potential for four one-year extensions. Because the candidates are not well-versed in the issue, it makes it hard for the voters to be well-versed, so thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Just to add real quick to that, Mayor, the, if anyone wants to look at the agreements between the city and the county, they are, they are on our webpage, and that agreement is included in there, so if anyone wants to know exactly what it says, it's available to them.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items, there are three items on the consent agenda, I guess we'll just read those first, please.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 11th, 2016. Item 6.2, approve Resolution Number 16-7385, authorizing access to the municipal investment pool account with the pooled money investment board. And item 6.3, approve a request to allow Salina Downtown, Inc. to reallocate a portion of $12,000 in city funds granted to them in 2015 to purchase downtown holiday decorations.
Are there any items that a Commissioner might like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Nope.
If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
So move the consent agenda be approved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. We'll move on to administration. Ms. Wicks, could we have 7.1?
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 16-10843, removing certain real property from the Downtown Development District and making certain findings pursuant to KSA 12-1770.
I'm not sure when the first reading was on this, but I believe there's been no additional comments provided to us from the public. Does the staff have anything additional? This is a second reading, and we'll bring it back up here for discussion or a motion on this item.
Move that we approve ordinance number 16-10843 on second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Aye. 7.2?
7.2, Resolution Number 16-7384, to declare the new dog park located in the East Crawford Recreation Area as qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines.
Is there a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, what I bring to you is the first step in a five-step process. Back in December of 2006, the City Commission approved the municipal naming guidelines. That outlined the procedure to name a municipal facility, and we are following that procedure today and bringing you step one for the dog park. It's designating this facility as a potential facility to be named. Fairly simple action. Staff has identified the following options, recommends option one. You can adopt the resolution. Option two would be to not approve this request or task us with further information. Be happy to stand for questions at this moment.
Any questions?
Maybe one that tag-team on this. On the, on the naming policy, is there any consideration given to the, the type of facility, whether it's all public or part-public, part-private? Does that, does this stage in that process have anything to do with it? I mean...
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
Wouldn't we reserve the right as a, as the Parks and Rec to kind of name this thing?
Well, you need to see the guidelines.
Yeah, it, the guidelines presume that it's city-owned or city-controlled for purposes of naming. That's, I think, as far as, they don't really...
Well, there's, there's four categories.
Right.
Are, are we to assume that it would be either, because it was done with donations, either philanthropic or just a standard?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, these guys might know, but...
Or, I mean, I mean, what's the other one? Honorary and then whatever.
Yeah, there's, there's municipal naming, there's philanthropic, there's honorary, and there's landmark naming, and I, I don't know the answer at this point in time, but that would come with the application for the actual naming. I don't know, Steve or Chris may know what, what's around the horizon there.
This one, we were gonna use a combination of the municipal naming and the landmark naming.
Okay.
Really doesn't have a, B and C, the honorary and philanthropic, don't work in this particular.
How does the petition part work? I mean, could, could there be, could someone circulate a petition, says we want it named something?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay.
And in that case, the group or the person would be bringing a petition, would be the, filling out the application.
Right.
In this particular case, Parks and Recreation Department has filled out the application for the dog park.
Yeah, the petition wouldn't be, when we use petition, we think of like a citizen petition with a high volume of citizens. I mean, they could do that if they wanted to, with some, you know, have multiple people sign it, but in essence, petition means filling out the form requesting the naming, the name from you.
Application?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions for staff?
Sorry, I just turned the page on.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine.
It's just a petition, we're not obligated to accept any naming.
And in a future, we would bring the name to you in future meetings and follow in the processes, so.
I, I think that that, just the donations on that, for that project, are just incredible. So, I mean, people love their dogs and cats in Salina, so. So, I mean, I can't, I mean...
That's right. You can name it Kay's Park if you want to.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Bring it back up here for discussion, then. This is, I lost my place again. 7.2, is there a motion for this item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 16-7384.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. 7.3, Ms. Wicks?
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 16-7383, to declare the new fieldhouse located in downtown Salina as a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities Naming Guidelines.
And the staff report on this?
This will be a very quick staff report, as it's basically the same option or same procedure that we're following for the downtown fieldhouse. It was very convenient that I was able to bring both items back-to-back to you today, so that we could get the, the process started on both of these facilities.
One question?
Yes.
Was the naming option part of the agreement for any of the monies that were given for the fieldhouse?
There's, there are some options on that. We will bring that to you in a, in a future meeting.
Let me ask it differently.
Commissioner, you're asking if...
Was the naming a requirement to get the money?
No.
No.
No. And the, when, when the naming came up as a topic, the staff informed, I call it the private investment group, the donor group, it's a combination of both, that, that we do have a policy and that the naming would need to go through the governing body. So there's, there's no prearranged, pre-negotiated or any other type of arrangement.
So no promises were made?
No.
Only question?
Correct. Thank you.
I got a quick, I don't know that that's actually accurate. I think the answer to your question is that I've got a, I've got a fundraising letter here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm speaking from staff's perspective of staff's involvement.
Oh, were you asking staff?
Yeah, I'm not speaking from, from fundraiser to donor, I'm not speaking from that perspective, but from the staff's perspective, maybe I misunderstood your question, but from staff's perspective, there was never arrangement except to let them know that if you are looking to name the facility, you're gonna have to follow the policy guidelines. Now, yeah, I think, I, I see what you're saying, Commissioner Blanchard.
I could ask my question differently, which would be, would we not have got the money if the person had not been promised they could name the building?
That I don't know for sure. That would be a question probably from the private investor group that participated. Yeah, I can't speak to that.
Did you have any?
Is there something further that you wanted to put in the record there?
Well, no, I mean... What's that?
That you wanted to put in the record? I mean, I, I don't know what that letter is you have there. Do you want to say what it is more specifically?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I'm not asking, but if you're wanting it in the record, I...
No, I mean, I, I was more interested in having the Commissioner's question answered, but I'd be more than happy to read into the record what this was. It's in regard to a March 3rd, 2015 fundraising letter for the downtown fieldhouse, and at the end, it's, I'll just read it, it said, "Multi-year pledges of 10,000, 25,000, and 50,000 have been received, and would like to personally ask you to consider becoming a part of the excitement with the three-year tax-deductible pledge towards the fieldhouse project." Next sentence says, "Several court naming rights are still available if of interest." So, that's just a letter that I actually had received on behalf of that, so I didn't know if that's what the Commissioner's question was in regard to, but I think that, from a staff perspective, I think that we have a policy, and, and we follow that, and my only concern on, on naming rights, and this may be, a, a, a follow-up to your concern might be, is that when we look at, when, when, under the philanthropic and the policy guideline here, it says, because I have a couple of questions, if you were done with your questions. Okay. One of them was that, let me find it here, on the, on the philanthropic naming, it refers to a person, company, or organization providing significant contribution to the municipal facility or city, and my concern would be that if you, if, if we did say want to have some sort of fee for naming rights, I would like to see that in some way, some of the, some of our anticipated operational deficits be addressed in that, because I know there was, and I don't know at what stage the agreement for the three years covering, subsidizing the operation deficit, where that is in the discussion, but I know that that was promised early on, and I think that we've pretty much considered that this facility is most likely to operate in an operational deficit in the future, that, kind of hoping that we might be able to look at offsetting some of those costs by any possibility of a naming right. But I think to the Commissioner's question, if that, if those have already been made, then I don't know that we would have those opportunities available to us. The second thing is, and it's probably, Mike, it's probably a good question for you, on this thing, the quali, on number three, Section Four Policy Guidelines, Section Three, Section Four, Number Three, the qualified designation of municipal facility, does it matter if we own it or the Qualic B owns it?
From the New Market Tax Credit perspective, I don't think that it does. One of the steps in this process will be to transfer ownership to the Qualic B, and the immediately following step will be to agree for the city to conduct all the administration and triple-net least the building as if it's our own. So, I don't think there's a, going to be any resistance from the New Market Tax Credit perspective.
Okay, because we have that meeting tomorrow, right?
Right.
Commissioner, I'll try to maybe help you a little bit with your question. I, I do think if you asked a donor what the expectation was, is their, or what their expectations or thoughts were, they probably would not be aware that there may have been either at that time or in the future, some type of linkage to the operational deficit question. I, I would think that they would tell you, yeah, that was never discussed with whomever it was that talked to me about that, and I think one reason for that is because, as you know, this group started off pretty fluid, pretty informal, and then, and then, as we went along, there was a formalized group, which included some of the same individuals, but it wasn't the same group. You still had a sort of a different, less formal group over here, and then you had a more formal group that dealt with more downtown stuff. Some of the people are the same as they are with a lot of activities in our community, but, but the, the former, the future group, the Salina 2020 group, does not, is not actually represent the initial fundraising efforts of that group. It was a loose-net group of individuals that said, hey, this is a need, and kind of talked about it, and we'd, we'd like to go out and try to raise money to, and of course, you asked them to go from a third to a half, when we were presuming a $9 million project at the time, so there, so, yeah, if you go to a donor, they're probably not gonna really be aware of, of that type of aspect.
Can I ask a follow-up question, then?
Sure.
On the definition, here are the descriptions of the different naming rights. Under philanthropic naming, second sentence, "This action requires no naming petition if the naming initiative is directly related to and coordinated with the proposed contribution." And this application is signed that no naming petition is required, which makes me again think that the opportunity to name was tied directly to the contribution, to getting the money.
Yeah, there's really two ways in that. The first way is, is, let's say that in this case, you're gonna have a facility, and there are folks that have approached us in the same way and said, hey, we'd like to raise money for this, and you have conversations, you feel that hits your significant level, whatever that level is, and they initially, at the very beginning, say, but we'd like, in order to do that, we'd like to name it X. This just says you don't have to go through the petition process later if you've already pre-agreed to do that. In this case, there was no pre-agreement with the city, which is why we're following the petition aspect of the policy, or would, would bring that to you on the assumption of the eligibility being granted.
So this does require a petition?
Yes, this would require a petition.
Because no is circled on the application.
Well, the petition is, is the fill-out of the application. It requires going through the process at this time. Let me look, I haven't, I'll take a look at the application here.
Well...
Are you, are you looking on the application? It's up, because at the end of that application?
I think so.
It says, "Application attachments, petition of a minimum of 300 signatures of the City of Salina registered voters." What would that be?
I'm on the wrong page. I'm on the wrong page, Chairman.
I recognize that we don't, this isn't a policy we frequently visit.
Well, there's a page that says, "Naming of Municipal Facilities Application." It's filled out by hand, and the box philanthropic naming has been checked. And then, near the bottom of the page, is the petition required, and it says, "No." And if you read the description of a philanthropic naming, it implies, at least the way I'm interpreting it, that the naming initiative was directly related to and coordinated with the proposed contribution, which, from my simple understanding, sounds like a pre-arranged agreement.
And Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was not pre-arranged with the City of Salina?
That's correct, because that would have been brought to you as a governing body. Let me look, I actually authored this, but it's been quite a few years, and I haven't had reason to look that deeply at it for, until now. And my memory's faltering.
I think probably the last one was the...
Gets worse as you get older.
Was that Oxbow Park or something, wasn't it, that we? I think that's probably why in the policy it says, "Determining this designation is encouraged at the inception of a municipal facility." So we're probably dealing with getting the cart back behind the horse on this one, so.
Commissioners, if we could, I think rather than hold you up this evening, it might be best for us to take some time to look specifically at this, to be very clear, then we can be clear with the applicant on whether or not a petition's required. It wouldn't in any way get in your way of determining eligibility for naming, which doesn't obligate you to name later. You still don't have to name it if you don't want to, you've just said it's on the eligibility list.
You're recommending postpone to the next meeting?
Well, I think you could actually take action on today's action, which is eligibility, but then the next step is, is receiving an application. And so we can, we can take a closer look at this to see if this particular application would require the 300 signature petition or not, but rather than do it on the cuff with a quick read, I'd rather we take some time. But you can still put it on the eligibility list. It doesn't obligate you to name it, and you could always take it off the list later if you wanted to as well. So you're not under any obligation if you want to go ahead and put it on the eligibility list.
And that would not pigeonhole it into the philanthropic naming route of being named, just that it is eligible for naming.
Yeah, that's the only action.
Any one of these four options, or categories.
Correct, that is correct, yeah.
And typically, that's a pretty low bar.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you might have a particular reason, you don't, there's a particular facility, you just don't want it named, and maybe it's a listation or something. That would be a really low bar, by the way. But absent, absent some significant reason like that, or a type of facility that doesn't make sense to name, it's a low bar. It just says it's eligible, so we can accept applications. But if you go ahead, you can take that action today, we can double-check this and see if that petition applies or not.
Okay, and so then, so then this would be a required step, just kind of going back to the item prior to this with the dog park. It's a required step regardless of what, what thing, I mean, it's got to be, be it as qualified facility.
Correct, qualified facility, and then step two would be...
Right, the process.
Whether you need a petition or not, the way I'm reading it. Is that the way you're reading it, Jason?
Yeah, the philanthropic is specific, and it says, "This action requires no naming petition if the naming initiative is directly related to and coordinated with the proposed contribution." Now, there's a lot of ways you can look at that. It wasn't pre-coordinated through staff and through you, that's true, but the fundraising was clearly, from the private sector's side, intended to be coordinated with the contribution for this. In other words, you didn't have a situation, the situation that occurred is, is you had those who were trying to raise funds for this project go and say, hey, donor, we'd like you to be interested in this, and talk about potential for naming certain areas of the building. So from that perspective, that's fulfilled. This doesn't go into that much clarity to say that whether coordination has to be through the city and the governing body, or whether it's really the intended, the intended approach to how the funds were raised. If it's about, like I said, if it's about the intention behind the fundraising of funds and naming is part of that, then yeah, versus this group raised the money, and then, and then they want to, someone else wants to name it later and call it philanthropic because the money's raised, but there was no relationship between who wants to name it and the group that actually raised the money. That would be one where we'd say, well, petition's going to need to be applied there. So it depends how you look at it. We didn't know that deep, the definition's not that deep, but it is clear that the naming initiative from the private sector's fundraising perspective is related to and was coordinated with the contribution. And if you went to a donor and said, when you gave, at least the significant donors, I don't know what the level cutoff was, did you anticipate the opportunity and ability, subject to the city approval, to name a particular area of the building? I think the answer would be, yeah, we did. So that we know, and then you can look at that, and I think that's probably why no was checked on the application, is because their initiative was coordinated for that purpose. You'd think, since I authored it, I could tell you exactly what that's supposed to mean by... I think that's probably what it was, but I can't tell you for sure because it's been too long. And quite honestly, when we, when we first applied this, it was not related to a philanthropic fundraising event at that particular time, so we were trying to catch a lot of categories, but that's probably why there isn't as much clarity there. But from their perspective, there certainly was coordination for purposes. Donors knew that when they were asked, that there could be naming involved. I think that's 100% clear.
But their agreement was not with the group that would oversee the naming?
Well, the, yeah, the agreement, the communication of that would be between those who were requesting the funds for this project and the potential donor, and that's where the coordination of naming would occur. In other words, both were on the wavelength of, if you give so much, then we'll recommend naming of whatever it might be. So the coordination was there from that perspective. So naming was a topic at the time of the conversation. I know the donors, significant donors for sure would tell you that's the case. The coordination that is in here, for example, was there a request earlier in the process, a formal request to the governing body, to say that was, that coordination happened with the city and governing body? And the answer was, no, there wasn't, but I'm not sure that's really what this is going after. I think it's about the communication between the donor and the asker, quester.
Would it be more, would it be, would it be possible to, instead of putting under philanthropic, because it wasn't, it wasn't a donation made to the city, it was a donation made to the partner of the city? To be more of an honorary, an honorary naming? I mean, Commissioner, would that be?
The honorary refers to a person of local, regional, or national significance.
Or organization.
Let's see. You have the flexibility, it's a policy adopted by resolution. I think you have some interpretive flexibility as to how you'd like to interpret that, if you like. It's not intended really to just exclude purposely. So it could be an organization, I think, in that particular case. It would be similar, I mean, that would be the topic you would pick if you were going to do it organizationally. In this case, though, I think what you're going to see is, I don't know for sure, but I think you may see a package of individuals and an organization or organizations that are going to be packaged up presumably, rather than, you know, addressing 10 different requests. I think it'll be packaged up. Don't know that for sure. So in that case, you will see both names of individuals and organizations. But if you're going to say, if an organization contributes and you want to pick out a topic, it is a philanthropic effort of the organization, so I think you could pick the topic and feel comfortable with that.
Nothing any touchier than trying to name a facility, as we all remember the stage
Anything else for staff? We'll hear from the public if they have any remarks. If not, we'll bring it back up here. I'm hearing that we can act on this item then, and...
I'm of adoption on Resolution 16-7383, declaring the fieldhouse as a qualified facility for naming.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. Move on to development business, item 8.1, first reading of Ordinance Number 1610844, requesting annexation of the remaining unannexed portion of South Ohio Street, south of Schilling Road. Staff report here.
Thank you, Commissioners, for agreeing to hear this item. We would consider this to be a housekeeping or cleanup item relating to the South Ohio corridor. I guess I would be one of those who is guilty of erroneously referring to the county-owned property as proposed expo center site, but that, that was the driving force for the inter-local agreement and for the planned extension of utilities in that direction. But John, could you go to my map, please? Just to give you by way of background, was that we had simultaneous requests for annexation, which occurred and were considered in August of 2015, and the Ryan addition annexation was subject to satisfactory plating of the property, so their annexation did not occur until March of this year. But as part of that, this section of Ohio Street was already in the city limits, this section was annexed. When this section of property was annexed, it left a 412-foot gap in between of South Ohio that had not been brought into the city limits. So this action before you this afternoon would be to take the 412-foot section that is in front of the Baldwin property there, and bring the Ohio Street into the city limits in that location, and that would put the city in charge of overseeing construction, access control, traffic control, law enforcement, and maintenance. And so we would no longer have a 400-foot gap there. So that is the purpose of bringing this forward to you, and we would recommend approval of the attached annexation ordinance on first reading, and the approval of this would make a 2,100-foot-long corridor here uniformly, the city's, for maintenance and law enforcement purposes.
So we wouldn't have to shovel snow, we'd have to shovel snow all the way down.
Yes, we couldn't, we couldn't stop so many feet down and leave the rest to Saline County. So the purpose of this is to fill in that gap and have uniform jurisdiction.
Any questions for Mr. Andrews?
I have, just a quick question for staff, and maybe Mr. Bengson. I noticed that the, I take it that we took it upon ourselves to get those non-protest annexation letters signed from the property owner, the Baldwins? And there were two, there were two notices that were signed? Is that, is there significance to that at all?
Are you referring to this document here? That, that is a document that I prepared and met with the Baldwins to get consent from them to annex the portion of Ohio Street that they own.
Is this what normally we, we've done? I mean, this doesn't...
It is, it is what we did in the case of Markley Road and portions of Magnolia Road as well. In many instances outside the city limits where we don't have plating, the property owner owns to the center of the road, and therefore, if we annex the road, we are annexing part of their property. And so, I don't know if you want to add to that, Greg, but the, because the Baldwins are the underlying landowners of the east side of Ohio, we got their consent in writing before we chose to annex their property. So I met with them and discussed the gap that we had there, and they were willing to allow their piece of Ohio Street to be brought into the city, but it leaves the rest of their holdings outside the city.
Okay. I just haven't seen one of those.
We, when we annex Markley Road, we actually had a large collection of these, because Markley Road was in the same situation where the, it was a roadway easement, and the property owners owned to the center of the road. So I just duplicated that process, but fortunately, we just had a single owner we were dealing with here, and they were agreeable, so.
Further discussion? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Thank you.
We'll bring it back here. Is there a motion on this item?
Move to pass Ordinance Number 16-10844, annexing, annexing the remaining unannexed portion of South Ohio Street, south of Schilling Road.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. Is there any other business to come before the Commissioner?
Two items, one question, then one item. And just a quick question. We, how close are we to having any Director of an EDO? Do we know?
I think they're still actively in the recruitment stage, and I don't, I wouldn't expect any announcements anytime in the next handful of weeks at this point.
Okay. And then the second thing is, is that in the back of the room is Mr. Bilfikus, and thanks for coming tonight. And as all of you know, about three weeks ago, well, prior to the 4th, when we had the day off for the 4th holiday, Mr. Bilfikus came in and made a request about helping to perhaps fund, I believe it was $3,500, which was half of the funds that they had experienced a decline from, from, I believe it was the Schwann family and also the Neers that are no longer contributing, because they're not in town, and they've been a long-time, pretty faithful contributors. And I know that they're thankful for their contributions over the years, and I thank all of us, we certainly are as well. Had a conversation, I think it was, with Jason on this, and also had a very brief text messaging back and forth with Chairman Shadwick on this, and I think there's a good opportunity for the two of us to work together. There was, some of the comments made were, how do you determine which causes you give to and which ones you don't? And I think those can be easily resolved. I mean, if we just put a condition on there that if you've been providing meals for 4,500 people for the last 30 years, you are eligible for that type of help. But I say that a bit tongue-in-cheek, but we're very thankful, and I think we all understand what a great benefit that is to a lot of people for that meal. And also, it says something when you have 75 volunteers show up on a Christmas morning to, or afternoon to help serve those meals. So I'd like to have us, this year, work on getting a 3,500 half, if we can get the county to do the other half. And the other thing I'd like to do is that, to maybe help make sure that, I think another concern was, is how do you, how do you make sure you're not making it less of an incentive for somebody to go out and do private fundraising? I think that maybe we could work with the organizers of the event to maybe do a three-year step-down matching funds program with them, to maybe help them get through the tough time and wean them off over the next three years, and so that, that really, I think, very popular event can continue as a tradition in the community. So I would hope that we could get a lot of support for that and help Mr. Bilfikus carry on that tradition. And like I said, hopefully staff can work on, with them, to, in a process, to work with the county and help get that done. So, anything I'm missing there that...
I have some questions that I'd like to have answered before we completely involve ourselves in that, and I'll visit with staff a little later about that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a little bit unclear. Covered a lot of territory there. One is, is are you asking staff to put together some type of a policy statement or something to limit the use of dollars for this type of activity versus other requests that you might get?
No, I just was using that as an example. I mean, we, I'm just saying that a specific request came in, and I'd like to try and make that, help facilitate that very specific request. And, and my thought with, working with them to maybe make sure it's not a year-by-year, might be, if we're 3,500 this year, maybe the deal next year is, we'll, we'll do matching funds with you up to a certain amount, and the next year, we'll do matching funds, step back a little bit, to help them regain their footing for the, for the donors, the private donors. footing for the donors, the private donors that they've lost.
If we do a step-down, you're going to need some kind of a letter of agreement or something. It might be simpler, if you're going to do it, it might be simpler, rather than to get into a bunch of paper, to just simply say, we'll fund it this amount this year, but don't expect any more than X amount next year, rather, and have them bring it back to you, rather than, because otherwise, you're going to have to create, we're going to have to go back and create some form of an agreement or something that you can approve. This is something I can do within my purchasing authority, but we, the reason it's more of an issue than that is just simply because there was a time that the governing body did give out funds for local nonprofit entities. I don't know if this is a nonprofit entity or not, but we did that for nonprofit entities for things that you felt were kind of mission-oriented services that typically a city government might have to provide if they weren't provided otherwise, and that was sort of how it was looked at, and it was funded through sales tax. And then there was a time that the requests got to be pretty large, a lot of entities, a lot of needs, and you felt like it wasn't something that the city was interested in doing. At that time, the governing body felt that way, except with a couple of exceptions, kind of got out of that altogether. And that's why I was asking about the policy, because there's decent anticipation, you might get a request or two, I don't know if you will. But on that one, we had a little, I think we evolved to a point, we had a little mini agreements. I don't think you need to do that here, but I do think you need to contemplate truly, when you get asked by some of the entities in town that provide, call it safety net services, how you're going to say no. I think that's really the biggest thing you need to contemplate.
And I was on the commission when we were getting an extremely, a pretty good size number of those requests. That's why I would prefer to look into the whole thing a little bit more before we make that decision.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. If you want to do it, I think the easiest way, if you don't mind, would be to just establish what you want to do this year, have them come back next year, and you can kind of give an indication.
Could you maybe touch base with Rita and find out the counties? Because it sounded to me like the county was very interested in doing that.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
And quite frankly, it might be an opportunity for us to work together in a positive way with the county on something.
We're working on some other things with the county, so...
But anyways, I appreciate you, I appreciate you looking into that, and I appreciate Commissioners' time on this.
I want to make sure, I don't know if you're planning on taking some action tonight or not. If you are, it's fine. If not, what do you, other than, is there anything you need from me, other than to kind of give you, well, to give you a direct indication of what the county might provide, if they'll match it?
Yeah.
Is that all you need?
I think that, and maybe we could have some discussion about the bigger policy aspect of it, maybe in a study session or something, but I'd like to know more background on the history of what we've done and, you know, where these things have gone before.
I need to look at our study session, agenda planner, but we're likely into probably late August, early September for a study session. I don't know if that might work, I don't know if that works or not, but we could do that. You're going to generate some interest. I'm just going to let you know ahead of time.
That's right.
It's a whole different program area, you're going to generate a lot of interest.
Massage's contributions.
So, if you want a study session, we can schedule it, but I'm telling you, you'll get some interest.
Maybe it would be something we could visit about at our fall strategic planning session, rather than a study session. Would that make...
Are we going to do that in the fall?
Usually do it in the fall.
Usually it's a little later than that. It's usually towards the end of this year or towards the beginning of next year, in anticipation of the budget.
Well, I'm talking about, though, any further...
Oh, further years' contribution.
Yeah. Maybe we could talk about it, because if we do a study session, we'll get a lot of interest, and, you know, it's kind of hard to sit there, turn people down, but there's also a lot of focus that'll be out.
You could look at this almost as what Arts and Humanity does for sudden opportunity grants. It's, this year could be a one-time.
Yeah.
And we just voted to put $10,000 in lights downtown, and $1,750 for food for the same event.
Yeah.
Which is primarily a spiritual event, not necessarily, shouldn't be an economic or political event. For a one-time event, I think is an outlandish statement for us to make, particularly if the county's going to go 50-50.
Yeah, yeah, it's up to you. Like I said, I can check and get back with you to see if the county's willing to go 50-50. That sounds like that might be the only piece of information you need right now. And the number is, what's our number, 3,500?
I think the total was 7,000, so it'd be roughly 3,500 pieces.
Well, I heard 5,000 to begin with, so I'm not sure. Mr. Ficus?
Excuse me?
Originally, you said 5,000.
No, I said 3,500, 3,500, to make it up for last year. And the whole thing, you wanted $7,000 to keep it up this year again.
So, part of the request is to make up from last year, and then also to put 3,500 towards this year, right?
Yes. So, in future years, you'd be looking at 3,500?
Total.
Well, something less, something less than 3,500, something less than 3,500.
I'd be happy to get anything to keep myself going for a while, to see how you come out this year. I appreciate it very much if it can help me.
Yeah, see, I would say, see with the county, with what's happening there, and then kind of...
I tried to talk to the county, give me the free, the building, and said, no.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, I got so much against since beginning last year and this year, and I tried to balance the whole thing.
Do you have someone that handles some money, like a bookkeeper?
Four of us would count the money.
Four?
Yeah, four of us. Me, Sanchez, Ken, and Mr. Brown.
I think that if you wish to give, if we're talking about 7,000, we ought to be talking about that for this year's cost, on the thought that, I don't know that you can make up for a prior-year loss, that you want to do that. However, if the prior loss means there's 7,000 down for being able, he's the 7,000 down from being able to do it this year, it's six, one half dozen the other, but that's probably the appropriate way to look at it. I don't, because you don't, shouldn't, municipal government shouldn't get in the habit of reimbursing somebody for a prior loss or anything. But realistically, we know that means when you have to fundraise this each year and there's not a balance sitting there waiting for him, that he really needs 7,000 for this year to make it happen. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so 3,500 each, 7,000 for this year total. So, same question.
And just to clarify, my request is that, I'd like us to move forward in seeing if things are bright and your concerns are, and everybody else's are okay, that we can make that happen. So, that's all it was. I mean, I wasn't certainly saying, just no matter what, go.
Sure. We'll schedule for your next meeting, we'll schedule the discussion topic, and then I'll see if, hopefully I'll know, I'll try to get that, get something to Rita, so maybe they can talk about it tomorrow, the county can, to see if they'll commit to 3,500 as well.
I think that's perfect, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other business to come before the commission? I believe we can...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, if you need one. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.